I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One day, ten hundred dollars, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good one. All right, let's begin with you. All right. Minutes for last meeting, our motion, I'll make a motion to accept, and I will second. Vote? Aye. Plans for payroll plans for five hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents as a motion. I'll make the motions of acceptance, plans and payroll. Second. On paper, aye. Okay. Uh, collections reported, motion. I'll make the motion to accept the collections from the ambulance department, health department reporter and sheriff for July. I will second. On favor, aye. Aye. Acknowledgement of the first monthly report for July. I'll make the motion to accept. Second. Favor, aye. Uh, government treasury bank reconciliation and monthly comparison report. I'm making motion to accept, I will second. All favor, aye. Now we'll move down to additional requests, uh, health insurance, a few hundred thousand. Do you want to do them all at once? Oh, yeah, yeah. If you don't want to, sorry, just go ahead and get this one down. Uh, ambulance overtime, gas, oil, uh, medical supplies, um, lease rental for, uh, some equipment. Motion approved, all these requests. I'll make a motion to accept all the additional requests, I will approve, second. All favor, aye. Aye. Does anyone here want to talk about the?
Jane, Jane, sorry, I got it.
Jane?
I think it was, Jen is here too.
Oh, okay. We're ready for it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Daniel, what's coming up? Busy, you pulled the, yes, all right, you should have received from Jane the information, our J-Rac committee has met a couple of times. And so you've tasked us with making recommendations as to the grants. You may be familiar with Johnny's house, maybe you aren't, but it's an ad that does a lot of good things for some of my clientele. And, um, and other counties as well, and so we have, um, vetted it thoroughly and are recommending that the court approve the request for improvements to Johnny's house subject to, um, written contracts. And, um, Pauline's working with us to make sure that before anything would be dispersed, that we meet all requirements, there is, sorry. Uh, meet all requirements for that grant so that we don't get in a pickle there and was it just those two, just the two for John's house? No, no, and crossroads, yeah. Yeah, and what, uh, what Amy would be doing is it's workbooks for some of our inmates and programs there and as you know, you've heard me talk about that before, we have a world efficiency, uh, uh, programs at the jail, so we're pretty excited about the willingness to do that.
That was what Justice ran us.
Yes, yeah, and also the MRP goes for.
Well, did we actually have a vote on that? Table that I didn't know that we actually. We put it down, so that table, so I didn't know that. That was, I said, did he mail, right, you had a response, yeah.
That's why I gave him formally, so it's three.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then, and I think that this means all the parameters, um, even the restricted use, but frankly, so, and you'll recall getting restricted and unrestricted funds. And then I'm saying that this means the requirements were restricted.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the J-Rax recommendation on the grants and the people that are working on it, I'll second. My favor, aye.
Thank you, I appreciate your support of these programs.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Do you have any back there? Um, I was working on maybe another building, but it's, I'll look out. Uh, so I, as far as lines are there, you're okay to stay, they're okay to stay whether or not, as well, so, okay, prices are the same. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the agreement between the county health department and Paul and record, I will second, on favor, aye. Aye. Anybody else here? And then?
Good morning, listeners. Good morning, did a whitelisted Indiana community foundation, I chatted with Aaron a couple of weeks ago and Tim's familiar with the project and I sent the same information that Tim's familiar with, to Aaron and Brenda last week. The community foundation is working with the other community foundations that serve for rebellion, fountain and Warren Kelly. And we've developed what we're calling the Wall Bash River Blueway Project. And as part of this project, uh, we're eligible up to five million dollars from the Lily Endowment. A lot of them, well, a lot of nonprofits submitted grant requests back to them a couple of months ago, ninety-two requests. We made it through the first round, so now there's fifty applications for money from the endowment. And so what the community foundation needs to do is submit some letters of support, these are non-financial letters of support. We will not be coming to you for money for this project, we will not be going to the county council for money for this project. It's just that your support is generally speaking, uh, of the information that I put in the letter of support and also the concept paper that you previously received, so just hoping any questions that either you might have for that. Love for a vote and approval for a bit of support for that project.
I don't have any questions, Dale, so we better be talking on the phone, so I'll make a motion to, uh, support the Wall Bash River Blueway Project Grant, I will second, all favor, aye. Dale, you might say, I mean, we'll follow these ones, how many are they actually giving out, if they're fifty, fifty, are they actually?
Yeah, so not to confuse everyone in the room, the, the Lily Endowment is one of the largest funders to community foundation. The tenth largest grant making organization in the world, they roll out lots of different initiatives, I don't want to, we're participating in three of them right now. So this is one of those three that I want to talk about to answer Tim's questions, so originally, there's a pool of sixty-eight million dollars. The amount of money that a community foundation can apply for is based upon your county's population, so you might receive somewhere where in Marion County can apply up to twenty-five million, or Hittinute County can maybe apply for ten million. But based upon our population, by fifty thousand or less, it's, it's five million uh, of a pool of sixty-eight, but the endowment says they may, if they like all the proposals that have been submitted, they may increase that pool of money that they have available to award more projects, so you don't hear about housing and childcare. But the original ninety-two proposals, twenty-three were childcare related for facilities and programming related to childcare.
Yeah. Yeah, that is, all right.
I think all there's.
You're all right, good morning.
That's, that's the second page right there.
Patty, I talked to Brad last week and week before about the Crowd, CrowdStrike thing, I'm not. My vote would be to pass on it at the moment. Um, do you have any thoughts? Yeah, no, yeah, you're fine.
Um, so my recommendation, no, I would not arbitrarily just sign a contract with a crash check, beans they were hacked. And, um, it didn't affect us in any way, it did, I mean, it affected a lot of people, it, I mean, it, there were some of our systems that were really slow. I guess I'm here to answer anybody's concerns about election, but my, what I started to say was my recommendation would be to get, um, somebody from CISA in here to do a physical inspection, um, they come in for anybody that doesn't know what that is, it's Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency. Um, with my continuing education that I'm required to have, I've been taking cyber security classes. If there are bad, I mean, there are bad actors out there, and so it doesn't make any difference what kind of election system anybody has. If somebody wants to hack it, they're gonna hack it, so, um, the CISA will come in and do free inspect, I mean, they will come in and just do your inspection. You don't have to, they will give you recommendations, um, I would rather see where we're wrong than rather to just take in another, you know, layer of security if we don't need it.
I would agree with you then.
Our, um, as far as our elections are concerned, um, the only thing that we are hooked up to internet wise is our, um, hope for our voter registration system. Um, it's statewide and when CrowdStrike got hacked, um, that, in that week, we had to change our pathways five times. So the state monitored that and was on that, so.
So you're comfortable where we are?
I.
In your opinion, you're comfortable where we are?
You know, I can speak, I can always speak to Fountain County, and I am one hundred percent confident of safe elections in Fountain County. Because of the safeguards that we have in place. So.
Does anybody have any questions, Carol, you had some questions, or anybody have questions, Patty, what can you say?
Is there a reason why we can't just do paper count?
Um. Paper count, believe it or not, going backwards, paper count, um, is more vulnerable than doing machines. Um, I know people think that paper count is safer, um, the more human beings you have touching it.
It's been rumored a little. I can't. They can't, they counted it faster, recount it faster than what I call it. You can't, you can't physically change somebody's handwriting if it never reaches the computer.
Um, well, okay, so let's go back to, um, punch cards, the Fountain County used punch cards, how many of you remember punch cards? That makes a shit out of that, so, um, when we had punch cards, that seemed like that was a foolproof method, and then you had, um, and here's my, my technical term for the little poking thing, you know, that you punched through that card with. And then it came down to where people, they started making, oh, okay, no, I don't really want to vote for that, I don't want to vote for this one. And so then you had, because a lot of states, the United States was using punch card, um, the hanging chat situation, we've had that. Why it was Al Gore and, and George Bush, and so it was determined that you don't want humans trying to make the determination of what somebody's intent is.
So you're doing that out of fact, it's, they're, they're literally, they're literally changing your vote in the machine, and you don't know the change in the machine.
Our machines aren't hooked up to anything.
It's the rule they are.
Our machines are not hooked up to anything except electricity.
Again, I can't have this.
Now you could, because you could, I mean, ballot, ballot boxes were stuffed back in the day, I mean, ballots.
We're talking about one person giving their hat in a computer, versus they would literally have to make paper.
I, I agree with that, I do, and, and we have paper now, we have pa, we went back to the paper ballots, we use paper ballots.
Well, we're still counting on the computer.
Yes.
You can verify with the ballot, so if there's an issue.
Yes, we have the ballots and we can verify, and, and also, there's a public test, uh, before every election, we have a public test. And I invite everybody, you know, we've had public tests since, I mean, I've been working now for twenty, almost thirty years in the clerk's office, and I've seen one public test where there was more than five people showing. So, um, the best thing, the best thing, my suggestion would be for people to educate themselves on our systems. Um, not every, not every county in the state of Indiana uses the same system, not every state in the United States uses the same methods. So it doesn't matter, I mean, it really doesn't matter what anybody uses, and like I said, there's bad actors out there, and if they want to hack, they're gonna hack. We have to be diligent in, in our safeguards of what we do to make sure that things are right. I know, like, there is a window, there is a window frame of, um, it's October seventh to December second, when voter registration closes. So that system, our voter registration system is locked down, we can't get into it, we can't make any changes, nothing. So on election day, we use a soccer recall equals, and that's, that connects all of our poll packs together so that I can't go up to Covington and vote and then drive over to Beedersburg and vote again, because it's real time, we can see, you know, who's voting. If somebody were to hack into that and say, oh, I mean, what's the point, it's, it's the poll pack system, they're not doing anything with ballots. Um, they could add like a bunch more people or take people out, but I still have the real system knowing how many people I got registered on election day, and it's not gonna change.
Can't get the guy on him, I know, I know one's Dr. Frank. Um, as we've now established. He can tell you ahead of time how, how the vote is gonna come out. I listened to an interview, and I can't remember the guy's name, there's thirteen states now that have approved that COVID is already embedded into the software. That they're running the elections now, and they, they literally got dead voters and multiple voters that weren't even there. And then they pulled them out when it comes time for reelection, it looks like you're watching the real election, it's not really happening. They proved it, it was supported in thirteen states for sure.
I can believe that, I can.
Only, to me, the only way to the malignant that is very much. Hand count, and it is a double hand count, you don't trust that. Not the South County, it's a big county, it's a word or not, but if all the counties start doing that, we can win a lot of the profit. But then they're gonna go back to the, hmm. Paying Americans, instead of being a, you know, with the intent. Hook codes and assist, I mean, both people, I believe in rank, that's a third of them. If you get anyone down, you're all moving in circles with marks.
Um. That would probably be a good question, like, to, again, because not everybody uses the same system, and it's because if everybody in the United States uses the same system, if somebody is gonna hack, then they're hacking everything at once where with multiple systems, it's kind of hard to hack all of them. Not saying it can't be done, uh, but I would definitely encourage you to come to the public test and, um, talk to our people from GBS, which is our voting machine, our company, and ask them questions about the codes, because it's, it's not, it's not so much code, it's not code, it's, um, well, it is code, I've seen it, I understand it because I've worked in it for so long, um. But the way our machines work, um, they build the ballots, it's just building the ballots, and they put it on a V drive, and then they put those V drives in our machines that are not hooked up to the internet. And so when you come in to vote, you sign in on a poll pad, and then you go to a machine that gives you, it, it scans the ticket that you just got for the poll pad, all that's telling the controller is that, hey, you live in Troy, Florida, or you live in Millfry. So then it gives you the right ballot, we have, we can have up to forty different ballot sites, so it's giving you the right ballot. They give you that number, you go to a dual machine, which all it is is a writer, it's, it's for people to be able to vote, put a piece of paper in and vote. One of the problems with going back, there's another problem with going back to paper, is then you're disenfranchising a bunch of handicapped people or people that can't write, people that can't read. Um, Chaba says, which is in state law, that we have to have systems in place for everybody to be able to go to a polling place on election day and vote.
When you're talking about small minority, then we can acknowledge it. Vote for the greater good, we can acknowledge that.
I know when we, the first machines that we got back in two thousand six, um, for the first time ever, a blind man was getting the vote on his own. And with, with paper, that would happen. I think that our times going backwards is not in the best enter, I mean, for the rest of the world, you are not gonna get everybody to go backwards. It, it was good, like, when I was a kid. Yes. I would say, yep, absolutely, that's the best way. But I also know going forward that, um, you're not gonna stop technology, you know, you're just not, there, there's, you watch on a national level now, the things that are happening, and it's like, yes, I, I would, I want to take it backwards too, it would be so much simpler.
We're saying is, we're, we're, they're not using just the hacker to make it higher. They'll get high, two, three, the half, and they're like, people want to see it happen. Because we're not looking at it.
I, I believe you, I, I mean, I, I totally get it. I, all I can say is that I am one hundred percent confident of Fountain County's actions. Because of the systems we have in place, because of, I'm not too demanding more, but because of my diligence. I mean, I am, I am, I cracked a lip on my poll workers to make sure that, hey, I want numbers to match. I think I only had one election that where numbers didn't match, and we weren't real sure why, and it was a week later that we finally figured out why they didn't match. But there are, there are fail safes in place, there are checks and balances in place, and for Fountain County, we do it. So. I mean, I can tell you. That, that's all I can speak to, Fountain County.
Patty, one other question, that's the company you're gonna have come in, is that a federal agency or state agency, federal?
Yeah. We are in, we are in region five, which I believe is, uh, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, Michigan, and Wisconsin, it's headquartered out of, um, Chicago. And, um, but yeah, no, they, like I said, they are at all the conferences that I've attended, I'm getting ready to go to conference in a couple of weeks, and I know they'll be there. Um. But I said, it's not something that we have to, like, they give recommendations, and it's not like they slide us around if we don't do them. They, they're just here to give us recommendations of what we could do.
Good, thank you.
Fine. Anything else?
I think it's, I mean, what is a public test that you're talking about?
The public test is when, um, the, the voting machine company comes in and when we have public there, they will, everybody gets to vote on a machine, it's, it's the election that's coming up. You know, you get issued a ballot, you vote, and then it's going through and matching the paper ballot with, you know, because you're running it through the scanner, and then it's, um, going through and matching, making sure that the scanner has counted each ballot correctly. So.
So you're saying when you do something like that, and you're lucky to get part of people, so there's really not much of a test per se?
Yeah, I mean, we still do it, we, I know, we run so many ballots through, we have test decks that, uh, we run through. Um, it's an interesting process, especially now that we have new machines and, uh, but the gal that comes that does my public tests, you are knowledgeable. She's been with this company for a lot of years, she actually is one of the, sold us our first machines back in two thousand six. And, um, she will answer any questions that people have, you know, in regards to the machines, we can simply do that, so maybe which is more of the? It's, it's done, it's done, um, before, like, this year, it is set for September twenty-seventh at ten AM, it's a Friday morning, ten AM, out in the community downstairs. So I encourage everyone to come.
We have some monitor, we'll wifi to see if they're, if they're connected.
Well, we would know right away if there was no wifi, because the poll pad didn't work.
I mean, you, the Mini Smart Act, Smart Act would improve, and they will make this their life off, and you'd literally, uh, a guy on his cell phone, literally hacked into the machine in front of you, showed that he was doing it, phone cell.
On a Dominion machine? Yeah, that part of it don't have Dominion.
Yes, I mean, somebody monitor our wifi to make sure that those machines they got, they say they're all like that, go. This, I don't trust anything, you're doing a lot. Because it's, it's easy to do that. I mean, just, we're not about people that don't give two shits about us. And, and all they want is their control, and they're the same people that are in the election, the machine selling business.
I never thought that our old machines could be hacked either, and, you know, of course, they, they proved that, you would have to actually take the machine apart. Um, because they weren't hooked up to the internet either, but yes, through coding, um. But again, I just, I am very confident of our election process.
You know, records?
How do you notify the public during the test? It is, um, put on our Facebook page, it's also, we used to put it in a paper, and it, and it still does go into the paper, but there's not too many people that take the paper anymore.
Exactly.
Um, but we also put it, uh, we posted here in the courthouse, we put it on our Facebook page, we put it on the website, um, it's going out. I know the phone call, although we don't have a significant turnout. Hasn't increased, I think, the number of people, to be sure that, yeah. We get all the phone calls, or, you know, the, the stuff going after these meetings, they call our office. So, one of them is, so.
Yeah, more complaints than I have. People like with, all right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion for the CrowdStrike consent agreement to put on pause, however you want to word it.
Yep.
Put on background for now. Yeah, and sign the consent sheet on, yeah, yeah, I understand, don't worry, so. Yes, we need the internal hits, I see yard, anybody else, Jason? Whoever want to be one starts.
No, me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, one more thing.
Yes.
Again, everybody come out, September like seven, ten AM to the public test, and then also, uh, September ten, I could Devon Peter and Attica, there will be a meeting candidates. So that's a, I'm just, I'm.
Six o'clock, I think.
Yeah, it's a, it's at six thirty, the doors open at six, um, so the Devon Peter and Attica, it's the thirteen student group, and the two commissioners, so, well, I'll support it.
And we're certain, motion.
Thank you.
We, oh, we, I'm, I'm recommending, just so you don't have to, I mean, just technical, blah, 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 I just re, refraining motion, motion to, uh, reject the CrowdStrike agreement, and that, and then it comes back, no, we can just go on, otherwise, that wouldn't even have to keep the table.
So, I'll motion to get the agreement, but all favor, aye. All right, all right, morning, morning, uh, one, we've completed our last, our second inch of things in service, so we'll try to service once and a half, get millions and beers, but uh, continue working on the overtime, uh, last December, we had a meeting with Patty, the consulting group, uh, she had put out a, uh, years worth of a schedule, that we could conserve on overtime, so I'm looking at that, it's pretty much similar to what Park County does, they get like four extra days off a year, which is back there with them now, so I'm gonna look with that, see what I can come up with, and maybe some of that stuff. So I see what we can come up with, that's fine, good, other than that, so I have, if there's any event, I don't know. There you are.
Oh, thanks, I'd like to ask commissioners, um, we've been approached, or I've been trying to do some research on this, uh, highway safety. We've been approached, or I've been trying to do some research on this, uh, Highway Safety Improvement Plan. It's for regulatory signs, uh, paid markings, this is a grant, federal, a federal grant, it's a ninety. Ten managing grant, um, federal highway, USI, I'm talking then about.
They pay the ninety or the ten?
You know, we have some concerns about striping roads, road signs, uh, this would be a good way to get a jumpstart on this. Uh, I guess the county had applied for this grant back in, like, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, somewhere in there. Um, so. This will take place in twenty twenty six, we have. October eleventh is the deadline, and the application will be put in by, um. There will be a fee for USI of six thousand dollars, to get the. Help you with the grant application, and to get the, uh. Improvement plan. Too, too systematic, I would say, yeah, once you total brand, um. They asked if we would feel comfortable inviting, and I, I said I will feel comfortable if we could possibly get in our twenty six budget to twenty five thousand. So we'd be looking, close to almost fifty thousand dollars a budget, something like this. How much that realistically did, that would be quite good to get us started. Really, yes.
I was saying, we had, I think, I was thinking we had Springtown, where we do, you know, that's always been a bad rate, that now it's getting striped now, and then. I was thinking we looked at that. When Donald Craig was still in, and to go from Covington down. To, uh, Starky Road, it's gonna be thirty thousand dollars. Called, yeah, I mean, that was ten. A lot of years ago.
Yeah. Um, that would probably cost again, definitely, it's cheaper, you just have to. But we can go look at it and see.
And it'd be higher for someone else, something good.
Right, and that would be actually, this project. It'd be federal, so we'd have to go through the whole. Rating process again, and a contract would be put in, signed with ours, and then the strategy, so. I want to bring that to you. Commissioners, see if you're interested in this.
My, my only hesitation on it, and that's, is the fact, just like Shrinktown, look, how many years did before we chip and seal that? Or came, the roads down there, I think, and there are always drives on that, probably twelve years.
Ten to twelve? Depending on.
Certain, okay, right, right.
You're saying it's me, I mean, it would, it would benefit. Even if we just did the striping. You know, for people who have been paid, they're running some priority, some water, yeah, stone block. Yeah, Meyer.
It's been, uh. Asphalt, and shit sealed about two years ago, and it, it did have the striping on it. Begin with, didn't it?
That's, if you're calling six thousand, just a lot of the grant, this is where USI helps the grant for them together. I do have that budget, yeah, and we wasn't, we could even up that more after I get a plan together.
Right, I just, I just, I just think if we're only doing twenty five thousand on our cars.
Well, okay, got me. That's a little low. I was just trying to be, serving them on that, to go together, if I actually, but. If you don't mind, it's like the application.
And I'm sure, yeah, I haven't checked with other counties, every county I go to, I look on the side road to see if they've got stripes. Two new counties probably about the best, if there's even roads up there, they don't have.
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, we pay each year, you know.
Right, we have.
You know, factors into our budget, starts that, um, Montgomery counties use this, they apply for this grant, they've got all their signs. They compare it with the county.
Yeah, I forgot about signs, that's awesome.
Okay, even if people get those striking, you know, yeah, I'm just not about the signs, yeah, yeah, I'm okay, yeah. Another thing, would anyone be opposed to us possibly starting a Facebook page? Get some information out to the public, I know this. They tried a couple years ago, I think the previous administration, I don't know what happened, and then they didn't, and go through, that would be missing. Information out to the public, which is the whole world, but the highway department's doing it.
I'm okay with that, so long as we're not running into any, any, that's troubles.
I wanted to ask, I mean, can't legally, is there any objections for starting a Facebook page with the highway department?
No, just be careful with the, um, we'll, we'll talk about how you, like, it's set up.
Fairly.
And you just have to, if it's an official website, you have to work with. Um, IT to make sure that it's, it is up to form of the public record, and it has to be reserved until it's open.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared, that'd be easy for everyone out there to know what's right on, so. Yeah, oh, I don't, really, so, um. There may be some gallons that they, I don't know.
Yeah, it, it's not a gamble for any of the departments to have their, I'll be informational, this page, but, um. I'll talk to you about it.
Uh, I am meeting a director, director from, uh, in Moscow this afternoon. To look at fog sealing, uh, some of the chips that we've done, just to see what. What we can do is, but often next year, you know, um, we still have chips on that. To look at the box, you know, I think that would give us started on there, for probably, probably, yeah.
Last one, yeah, a little bit longer than that. Just maybe even about five more years, um, or three, three, five, right, right.
Just something that's reserved. That worked, eventually.
I should, so, I, I was reminding you now that, and Virgil's just doing a part of the Springtown.
And Virgil.
Yeah, it went too far, that whole section, Brad Green was at our meeting.
That, that's not our, that's not our, that is not all the way. That's what our map shows, that is not the county, our county district is all very good.
And kind of give you a little background. The why after that, going out to Covington, so, uh. Few years ago. That was supposed to, where is our, where is, so I don't misspeak, where is our line there? It's right at Nursing, that little bridge right in Nursing, we got thirteen streets, thirteen. County ended up paving all of that. That's all that matters. Believe me, we have way over.
So that section, so that section that got chewed up, and it's. Is right indicated that there was a section that was.
No, there's, we just came up, there is nothing.
And they haven't finished.
Yeah, they're supposed to be, they should be up today, doing the main line today, um. But, no, that section was not for, they saw it right there, basically. That's, that's just where our, our map that we use for our community, for all some grants and applications, that's for sure.
Okay, I just wanted to know, please, somebody asked.
Yeah, yep. Thank you.
You sure, Eric? Yeah, okay.
Good morning.
Good day.
Morning, guys.
Morning, Eric.
Pretty good, pretty good, just wanted to know that we are fully staffed, and we did lose one part time right now. But we have another one that has taken the place, and has started the process of removing the system, so.
Go ahead, please.
Has another question for me?
Thank you.
Very much.
Honey.
Hey, morning.
Thanks for reading our lease, I just want to know if we had any questions, or?
We've discussed it multiple, I think we're just stuck where we are at the moment, and. It's as good as till we get our next, so, for now.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. All right, any other department? Okay, full comment?
I have a question for the, oh, yes, on, um. A couple of meetings ago, the corner perpetuation issue came up. And I checked with colleagues, I think we have. Will still a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, hundred seventy eight thousand dollars, that account for permanent perpetuation. And on average, probably brings in about fifteen thousand dollars a year in that account. Um, on those, typically, perpetuated, would be between fifteen hundred and twenty five hundred dollars each corner. Um, the ones that are in the roads, they will need the highway department to help them operate them up, because they would be digging in the road on the asphalt. Um, do the commissioners wish to start this process, being able to put out their request for bids and get three, four, five bidders to bid on it? And see who's the best bidder, or is it something you just go on the bid on and decide?
Well.
It's pretty outdated, Brett, um, it's pretty, we had about that three days ago. Oh, that's for a long.
It, it doesn't go out of date, it's not fully perpetuated, you know, I mean, the corners are the corners, some of them are stones, some of them are. A rock under the tree, the tree is gone.
The rock.
Two hundred years ago, it's back here. So they either go and find something and they monument it, or they don't find something and they perpetuate it to that point and monument it. The, the new monuments would be still monuments about this height, encased in concrete. And if they are in a egg field, they'll be about two feet deep, so, you know, the chisel doesn't go across them.
I'd be there, okay, give us a bits there, and the money's there.
The money for that, the money specifically for that, so, you know, but once we start and we run through that money. Then we're looking about perpetuating six corners a year, which is fine, we can still do that, as long as we just get up to speed. And, and my proposal is to segment the county into four segments, and start with, say, in the, in the north east segment, and work through that. You gotta work off of one corner and perpetuate by, you know. Um, my only question to you guys, if you wanna start putting out some feeders for bids, they have to look at the bids and see what they look like, and go from there. It's that the money's there, it's sitting in that account, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use for that, so, okay, I'll start that, thank you.
Yeah, no one, anyone have any other comment, questions, or wrap this up, all right? Can I make a motion, Paul, I have a second, all fair, all right, aye. Thank you, everyone.